Ms. Mason is our chair.
Sorry, are you ready to start or are we still waiting?
I think we're probably still waiting because we don't have, we have one presenter out of like four.
Right, right.
So.
Okay.
I know we're supposed to livestream it, but like.
Well, we're telling, we're live, the mics are muted, but we're live just to say that.
We're making it there.
Right, it started, whether or not anybody's talking.
Right.
Yeah, um, so we're, we're live, but.
Live, video live?
No.
The livestream is, is going, but there's no audio. And then once you guys start, then we'll bring up the audio.
We have a presenter now.
Okay, well, that's good.
So.
Hey, welcome.
So, yeah, whenever you guys are ready.
The rest of the four of us.
Yeah. Enjoy us.
How are we all?
Good.
Bye you.
Tired?
I woke up today.
Good. That's progress.
Always better than the other options.
Always better, it's the best thing I can say today.
Waking up.
So Google's got fourteen people as attending her RSVP'd.
Yeah, it was a little bit of traffic out, so probably. How are you guys?
Feel like it's Friday again.
I know, that's what I said, is today like Wednesday or Thursday? What is today, Monday?
Monday during allergy season.
Right, like everybody came in today a little stuffy and.
Yep.
Stopped up and.
Covered in orange and yellow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've had a sinus infection for three weeks.
Oh.
Oh.
It's the worst. It just takes so much out of you. It really does.
I'm always into Benadryl haze.
I don't know why, my family has it, I believe it's genetic. We've always had sinus. My dad.
All right, welcome everybody to the EDI meeting committee meeting. There's a small number, hopefully we'll have more people trickle in as we go. We're probably gonna have to jump around on the agenda just to make sure that we get everything covered, but it's not looking like it's gonna be a super long meeting. I'm just gonna say, let's go right ahead and start with the student voice report, if you don't mind.
Okay, well, hey, just make me folks, why don't you?
Just get right on it.
Let's see, so student voice, our students, let's see, as you all know, we implement, or they wrote this policy and it was voted on, and it's been here for almost a year and a half. Our students are, you know, really excited about this policy. They've been working really hard trying to create a webpage. They've created a student interest form, and they are trying to get in on the next principal's meeting in April. What their goal is, is that they want to go to this meeting, speak with all the principals from the middle and high schools and let them know, hey, we've made a student interest form. We'd like to either show you a way or hear of what ways, if you're willing, to be able to send out this form to all the homerooms in your school, for example, you know? So that we can get students to respond, to show their interest. And within that form, it would indicate what school they attend, what they're interested in or not. It would also be able to list different committees that students may be interested in, because part of our policy does state that students will be able to speak at certain committees, or at least sit in and listen, because the ultimate goal and all they're concerned about are really two things. One, having a seat at a table, and I don't mean that in a threatening way. They want to be able to have a seat at the table to be able to converse positively with adult stakeholders when it comes to matters that concern them within the school system and within the classroom. So they, they just really wanna be a part of how things are formed for them so that they can know, so that they can give an input and they can come and speak with people. You know, students learn from teachers, teachers learn from students. And so that's really their ultimate goal. But sadly, you know, we, what is this, March? I'm just already looking at it to be April, but sadly, with this policy being in place for just like a year and a half, we still feel like we have some, we still have the same questions that we've had in the beginning. And now it's kind of a bummer, you know, we have seniors who may want to get involved, but then the year will be over. So they're ju, we're just kind of at a funny place, not even really a crossroads, but we're just on a road. We just don't know where we're going. But they are definitely focused, like they're working hard, they're gathering data, like they want to be able to report, and so what they created was a video where four of the students got on and they have a video that they want to use and deliver to you guys to see, so that you can maybe give them some feedback, because tomorrow, some of them are doing track, some are doing tennis, some are doing the Special Olympics.
Tuesday, Thursday are sports days for high schools.
And it's really hard for them. So I don't think it's appropriate as the adult accomplice with this group to be the one to stand up and speak for them, because although I work with them, it's not my voice. These are, it's their words. So what they came up with to do was to record a video. And since the policy states that every board meeting they will be able to report, they'll be able to show the video and say, hey, this is what we're doing, this is who we are, this is what we'd like. If you have any questions, blah, 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 this is who you can contact. So that's just kind of our report, that's kind of what we have. I thought, I mean, I sent the video and they sent the video out so that you guys could see it today, but.
Was it through our email?
I don't, yeah, I don't.
I didn't get it.
Cause I didn't get it.
Okay, Malcolm got it, but then I got that he wasn't gonna be here, so.
Maybe we could make a request to Malcolm to forward that to us. I also have a question, this was a great update, thank you.
Yes, yes.
And I think Ms. Cravill knows where I'm probably going with this, right? The board did its work, the board passed the policy, set the, you know, set the vision for the school district regarding student voice. But now it's time for administrative procedures, right? And so some sort of chain of command, because I heard a couple of things from you, like that sound like easy problems to address if there's a staff member in the district who's responsible for addressing them. And I'm not.
There is, it, it's Malcolm.
Okay, so.
Malcolm will, will help put those kind of things together, the, with that. The, and then of course we have Shala and we have Brian Jones, we have Abby Nobles. We've got all those student, I mean, student, they're accomplices, right? They're allies and accomplices. So, yes, it's a, it, it's kind of in that court, or the students' court, to bring that information, but Malcolm is kind of their, their conduit right now.
Okay, got it, so like, if the students wanna send out their survey, and it sounds like they wanna send out their survey.
To students? To other students?
They wanna send it out to all students.
Does Malcolm send it out on their behalf?
Well, Melissa, go ahead. I'll give you my opinion, but she's in charge, so I'm gonna just sit back in my chair.
Because it, like, trust me.
Does that, it's a question, I mean, the question would be, does that follow along the same lines of the survey policy that is being worked on in policy committee? Cause if that's the case, then that's gonna be a little bit of a different story as far as getting parent permission and things like that.
It's gonna be a lot of a different story.
Yeah.
So this is not a survey. It's an interest form.
Okay, what kinds of questions are on there?
So, questions are like, one, they just have kind of like a blurb of what the policy is. This is our policy, this is who we are.
Policy four, four zero zero four?
Four zero zero four. And they go into, ask questions like, would you like to join student policy? Would you like, um, student voice, would you like to use your voice to not fully like address problems, but would you like to use your voice to share some of your concerns and ideas about what you would like to see in schools? Like, it's not, it's not, and they were very tactful to make sure that they created a form that doesn't ask questions where students feel like, here's my sounding board to complain. It's not that type of situation at all. They're just genuine, well-thought-out questions on, this is student voice, this is who we are, would you like to join this? And if so, what schools do you attend? After they say what schools they attend, here are some policies, I'm sorry, committees that you could be a part of. Which ones would you like to be a part of? So they would be gathering and collecting three components. What school you attend? What committee you would like to join, and what grade you'd be in, that's it.
Any gender questions?
Uh-uh, nope.
Um, is there, have they developed the forms at this point?
Yes, we have a student interest form.
Is there a way we can, that, that you could send that to me?
Yes.
That'd be great.
At the last two board meetings, I think, we've asked about student voice, but.
No updates.
There was not a report, I don't think Malcolm had any information in or. I know before we've had this similar conversation, and I've suggested that talk to the superintendent about allowing the student voice to come to a principal's meeting for, to present for a few minutes. Maybe the board could help out with that. Also, you could post that, which I did suggest once before, I believe, if I, I'm pretty sure I did. We could also post it on the website, New Hanover County Schools website. So at least you could begin by telling them it was accessible there. But I do understand sending out that information. In some shape or fashion, would be beneficial.
They, they made the form, they have a QR code for the form. And that, that's really, like, they really just want to have the principals, at that principal meeting, they really wanna explain to them, because they really feel like the only people that's gotten a real clear understanding of what student voice is, is from coming to the Board of Ed meetings and coming to EDI meetings. They really feel like, you know, we need to speak to the principals so that they can understand what this is and send this out, and, you know, whether or not they're gonna approve to do it or not. But so that all of the students in every single school, because we can't be student voice and just have the students who helped us write the policy be the ones who be, be the voice of all the students in New Hanover County. It needs to be inclusive, it needs to have different backgrounds, it needs to be diverse, it needs to show all lived experiences. It does not make sense for students to be able to use their voice, that it only be a, not a select few that we selected them, but a certain few or faithful few, and not all of the students that we have in New Hanover County.
May I ask a question, Mr. McManus, will you teach us? How do they get on the agenda of the next principal's meeting?
Malcolm. Melissa asked Dr. Faust.
Okay, so Malcolm asked Dr. Faust, and that's how they get on the agenda?
No, I was gonna ask.
That's my middle name, my middle name is Sheena, sorry.
Oh, really?
So I think it would be also productive to have like a protocol when they wanna release some type of information. So if we, if Marcus is gonna be there, Malcolm is gonna be the person, so how early do they need to send this thing for pre-approval? What is the turnaround time? Is he gonna have a week to respond and say, make changes or do this? In case of this, let's think in this specific example of the form that is gonna be out for the district. So, and that is gonna speak, and it's gonna speak for us as a EDI committee, right? So if Malcolm is the one who is going to approve it, so they need to send it a week in advance, two weeks in advance, and then he's going to approve it or suggest it for changes, or it comes to us as a group, and then we read it and we make offer changes. What is it that we wanna do with that, so they don't have to be jumping hoops every time they wanna, they wanna advertise, or they wanna say something in promotion of the, of the student voice group?
I definitely.
But also caution us to say, Malcolm's not gonna approve or disapprove their work. He's the, he's the conduit. So they bring to him, he might offer some suggestions, but he's not an approver, you know, of, of their work. Because he's just their, he's, he's their subject matter expert, just like this committee's subject matter expert, he is that too. You know, but to your point, the. We, I'll just, I'm just gonna say it out loud. Are the student, I am hearing through my student connections that everybody is just pretty much on, the students are on pins and needles about what's next because of the actions of us on the board. And that they don't wanna get too engaged right now to have the rug pulled out from under them. So that's what I'm hearing, so.
Can I add to that?
Yeah, and I mean, I, I don't know, you don't have to answer, I'm just telling you, this is what I have heard.
I just wanna add to it, it's not just the students, it's the advisors. And, and we need to clarify something, cause it was said earlier. Abby and I are over, not student voice, Shala, Shala is our, our content person, Abby and I are over student equity teams. We're very much alike.
Engagement team, right?
Student, well, student equity slash engagement, yes, we're changing. And, and because of some of the vergage that came through, leading up to November and everything else, no one understands, there has not been a clear message sent yet, sent yet. Are we hated, are we despised, are we accused, persecuted? I ain't gonna go into scripture, but like, we, they don't know. And so a lot of work has ceased, if not come, well, can't, has slowed down and almost ceased because there hasn't been a clear message yet as in, are we supported? Because take, for example, the student equity team, the student, well, again, we're probably gonna change the name of it. Our sole role was prior, it came about during COVID, was to inquire, to use students, very much like a principal advisory group, it was to survey the schools to see if what we were doing when Dr. LaShawn Smith was Deputy Superintendent, is what we're doing being heard by the students on any level? Is that being heard by students, is it being understood? And also, what are your concerns in your schools? So that we could be informed, each school can be informed, this is what's going on, this is how they're feeling. So, again, with all that was leading, I hate to be to the point, but with all of the political whatever, no one seems to know, well, what are we doing now? Because we have a student conference that's supposed to come up in April, we have not heard a message yet.
And, and that's the other.
As if we're being supportive, and the kids, and the kids are waiting, the parents are asking, and the advisors are asking.
And student voice wants to, to be a part of that, a huge part of that to work through as well.
Student voice has always been supportive, yeah.
Right, and so that, it does seem a little weird. You know, it, it is like a stain that, that's there, because.
It's like we're in purgatory.
Right, if anything, Brian and Abby and I and the students should be in constant conversation and talking and sharing ideas and learning from one another to be able to move what he's got going on with students and move what we've got going on with students. But there just really has been a huge speed bump in the way. And we really don't wanna keep getting our kids so excited and having them work so hard to do the things that they're doing only to be like, mm, well, no, we'll start next year in August. Like, it's, it's a long time coming.
You guys are welcome whenever. The, and even if you have the video that you wanted to play, any one of us could make it, you know, a request to add it to the agenda and then have it seconded, you know, because you already have the space. It's just a matter of, if you have nothing to say in the space, then we'll skip over it. But if there's something to say, like that video, if, even if it's just, hello, we're still here, you know, we're still figuring it out, you know, the. Cause a lot of people are thinking that it's us that's saying we're purposely keeping them off the agenda, which we're definitely not.
And they, that's why they wanted to address and make sure, so, just so that everybody's clear, on the other times that student voice should have been at the Board of Ed meeting speaking, they made the decision to say, and they said to Malcolm, we have nothing to report at this time. They had nothing to report at that time because they were still working. They'd come off of a break, some of them were working other jobs, some of them were applying for colleges, some of them were doing all, so many other things. So they opted to take a break, and in those last two, what, two or three times, we communicated, there's nothing to report. But in that time, they had been working on everything that they're doing now. And now they're like, you know what, every meeting, if we don't have a written statement for Malcolm to read or me to read, they will present with a video.
They can join, they can join via Zoom if they, if it's easier for them. They can do that, you know, we have guest speakers all the time, do that.
Oh, that's helpful to know. That's helpful to know, yeah.
I know.
We also wonder about how they're doing this.
No, yeah.
Right, right.
Power. Ms. Walker?
Thank you. So, yeah, that's what we did our hard work on, was to make sure the student voice had a place on the agenda, and they always will have that place on agenda. Like, if you don't have anything, that's, that's okay, it's probably good for someone, even Malcolm, to just say, you know, the students didn't have anything. But a video would be good too, and a Zoom would be fine. I mean, even if it's not something you have, like, project-wise worked on, it's something maybe the students. I mean, I don't know y'all's structure, because I know we just kind of formed student voice. We have the, we have the policy, which, to me, I felt like we formed it, but it was gonna obviously be a working document. I mean, to get a little structured, more structure to it. I know student voice itself was, was the national program, they kinda helped you guys form. But what you guys do here is kind of what's up to the students in a way.
And what you missed before you walked in was, she had mentioned that we're past policy, now we need the procedures. So that's what, that's what they're working on.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're just the implementation from each middle school and high school, however they want to implement it, which is also written in the policy. It's not what the students are to tell the schools how to do, it's how the school chooses to implement what they come up and create to do. So with this process, with the student interest form, it's, they're charging all principals, if we can get into this principal's meeting, to share the interest form, and however they implement it, however it's gonna get through to their students, is how they choose to do it.
So Ms. Harper, can I clarify, can I ask you to clarify, so what do you mean, if they can get in, do you think?
Well, we do not have a yay or nay or maybe if we can get in on the principal's meeting yet. And we, that's what we were also talking about, who do we contact? What's our chain of command, is what we were saying? Chain of command, our turnaround, our quick duty to get stuff in, what's up?
So I just got a text from Malcolm, and he okayed me to say this out loud, he's listening, so.
Hi, Malcolm.
He's home, he's ill, he's listening. And he said he is working on the principal's, getting on the principal's meeting. And he has sent the video that you were talking about to the board members. So you should have in your email a copy of that video.
Can I, can I, Ms. Mason, can I ask for clarification on, is it, is the video ready for tomorrow night to go?
Yes, yes.
That's cool. And, and the next step, I think, also, I don't know if you guys have talked to your students about this.
It's in our email.
Um, are getting on committees. And I, I don't know if you remember, if you remember how we were supposed to do that with the students? Cause we don't have a uniform application.
Well, what we're, this, this is, was the next thing I was getting back around to, is that not only is our board sensitive to surveys, and that includes pre and post curriculum presentation, I mean, we're at that level. So it's not really a survey, but are, we're at that juncture. The next juncture is, which is coming up, is to develop what you said, all the, you know, how do you get on the committee? That I'm not so certain that students getting on the committee are gonna follow the same, I mean, to use the same application, but they probably should, but we're ways away from that, you know, doing that. But all of the committees that we have, board advisory and board committees, have added the word student in there. So every committee is poised to take a student or two, you know, on that. We just have to, and Josie Barnhart is our policy committee chair. And so she's the one who's doing a lot of the editing of these things, the survey and the policy twenty-two thirty.
You next.
Mr. McManus?
Your priorities are to try to be one of the principal's speeches as soon as possible, is that correct? As one board member, and I feel like I wouldn't be the only one, there are four board members here, we're not in, okay, I'll make sure.
We're not making any decisions.
We're not making any policies.
Only you three vote.
We're talking about policies, so I come. But I think that we would, we could hopefully talk to the superintendent, that could be done pretty quickly.
Please.
Give them time to speak and present.
Please.
Number two, I think Walker brought it up, I was gonna ask, but have you got anything for tomorrow night?
Yes, that's the video.
The video, how long is the video?
I think it's about four minutes, I think.
And for lack of a better word, it's been, it's been watched.
Malcolm has seen it, and now that he sent it and you guys have it, please, take the time to see it. I'd like to know, you know, before we could leave today, so if there's something that they need to edit, we could do that. But it's, it's really cut and dry, it's, it's not anything that's gonna like stir the brewing pot that will be in the room tomorrow.
So, I know I just talked about the application for committees, that's not a survey. I don't think that, that falls under survey.
No, no, it, it does not.
Okay, I was gonna say.
No, I think, I think it was meant as like a separate issue, so two separate issues, yeah.
There's the survey issue and there's the membership form, but we are ways away, um, I believe, in getting that.
And you say that because, why?
Because she, Josie hasn't met with anybody.
Well, it's not down to her to do committee, to do the application.
That's what Pete told her to do, and she's the policy committee chair. Um, so, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't have to be in policy, to me, it could be just, you know, procedural, but that is the route that we're going.
I think we need a timeline, I think we can't just say it's, it's gonna happen, I think we need to aim for, I would like as soon as possible, because we've been talking about having a co- common application for our committees for a very long time, and, and students would fit right in there with that. I think maybe we should set a goal for ourselves, that we do it in the next couple of months, and if that doesn't work, then.
Well, the next couple of months, school's out.
Well, I know, but I mean, I don't think that should matter.
We don't have a meeting till May, I mean, till March, March the fourteenth is our next meeting.
No, 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 I'm talking about a board meeting.
Policy committee.
I just don't see why it's gotta be under policy, that's what I'm trying to say.
We need an ad hoc, we can't sit up there and four, and seven of us come up with an application, we can't do that. Because we need the subject, this is Stephanie Crago's personal opinion, we need input from this board, this board committee chair. We need input from, you know, Title IX committee, we need input from the curriculum committee, and that's, that was the whole jest, and it kee, it kept getting pushed off until the new board came in, and then that's, that's where we are, that's unfortunate.
I just don't think it needs to be that hard.
It does not need to be, but that's where we are.
All right.
I have a question, yes. Um, you mentioned the students getting on the committee, um, that there would probably be a separate application for that? Um, if so, do you think maybe in trying to create that application, that the students could help assist in creating an application that, and students would be using? I'm sure that some of them wouldn't mind assisting on that, could they do that?
See, I don't.
Is that something procedurally that we can.
Well, the good thing is, the EDI committee has a application form, and the Title IX has an application form. So, we have a good, solid place to start. It, like, Ms. Walker, you're absolutely right, it, it does not have to be that hard. And it does not have to be that hard, we should be able to knock that out, you know, um, in the policy committee meeting on March the, or on March the fourteenth, and then we could vote on it in April. But then we have April and May, you know, um, for anybody to do anything. So, I don't know that we're gonna get that common application, but I don't see a problem with the kids expressing, I mean, they, they can read online. All of our committee things are updated now, they can read and just at least be formulating what they would like to be a part of.
But is it possible?
Yes.
I'm thinking that, that we are talking like two separate things right here, and maybe I'm confused, I'm wrong. Because the first thing that was brought to the table was the idea of spreading the wings for the, uh, Students Voice and getting the, the entire school population to be part of the Student Voice. Now, that is the interest that we are trying to wage and getting students involved and motivated to be part of this group.
Correct.
Then, when they belong to that group, that is the second step, that is the other thing that we are talking about. Now, students, in the form that they are creating to access the Student Voice, can have an interest in belonging to a specific committee, but that doesn't mean that they are gonna be part of the committee yet, because they would need to follow, like, the committee procedures to be part of that. So, I, we don't have, I don't think we have to solve the entire thing right now. As long as we have a way to get students access to the application form, to the Student Voice Committee, we could be good for this year, if they are here, if they are part of the committee, they get an idea of how the, the Student Voice group work, then they can be ready to do the application process to start next year as being part of a committee from the beginning.
Look at you, yeah, you're right there.
Ms. Walker?
I, I agree, I think what, what we were having the conversation as far as, is the board application for committees in general. I think the separate from what maybe the students want to do in their, in Student Voice realm. And I think you're right, I think they can come any, they can come sit in any, committee meetings anytime they want, I mean, public gets to come to them, so.
Like part of the audience?
Yeah, but, and that's the main reason why we're here, because at this point, the only students that know that they can come are the ones who've been working, that's one of ours, yes.
Come sit down with us.
The only students that know that they can come to these committee meetings right now are the students who have helped to write the policy. And like, so Miles, for example, is new, you know, to the group, um, so, that's something that he probably didn't know. So, that's the main reason why we want to get into that principals' meeting, because we want that interest form to go out to all students. The Student Voice just can't be only the students who helped to write the policy, and it's been those faithful few coming to board meetings. It needs to be everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ms. Crago?
So, um, Malcolm said he does not have to go through Dr. Fouse, he can get on.
Awesome.
Um, the next principals' meeting is not until the first week in April, because they just had one this past Thursday. So, we already have that for the good of time. Um, he is good with, um, the, the video as long as we've all watched it, so, um, I guess we don't have anything set up for us to watch, but if anybody, um, has.
I'm trying to connect to the internet, but I don't know what it is, what's happening, I mean.
So, it, it may be kind of a rush to try and do this tomorrow, you, I don't know, but.
Well, it'd be nice if we could see the video, that would answer a question.
It's on your email.
Yeah, it's on our email, but.
And I can pull it up on my phone if we all want to gather.
She can't access the internet.
Yeah, I can, I can get it on my phone.
You can put it on here.
But yeah, I really, the students really want to have their voice, and please, you're the student. Um, speak tomorrow, um, and have a statement heard from them, because there hasn't been one in a long time.
Yep.
Um, and I think that's gonna be like really good for the community and everybody else who's kind of watching the progress of Student Voice. Um, because we just really don't want everybody to think that we're not here anymore, we're here.
I do also. But I don't have anything to do, so, might as well, after my ACT, you know.
Ms. Walker, did you want to say, did you want to say anything else?
I, I guess we could just.
We should probably, as wonderful as this is, we do have a couple other things, um, that we do need to talk about, uh, that are on the agenda. Is there anything?
I, I, I do need to know, but I, I still do need to know, again, we have a conference that has been in limbo for several months now. We need to know if we, if New Haven County Schools is still, um, just supporting, um, New Haven County Student Equity Teams and for our conference. Because we had two convenings last year, um, we cut it down to one, and we still don't, this is scheduled for April, I believe, the twenty ninth. So, we've been waiting to hear.
Ms. Walker, can I ask, uh, Brian, for clarity, so, what is, what are you waiting to hear, like, because I feel like EDI, EDI didn't really, I mean, you guys, you, you two kind of took off with it, and did a really good job with the two that you had.
You're talking about funding?
Well, for one, funding was not, I understand, was not available for this year.
Okay.
Um, but people from the community have said that because of how inclusive it was and how great it was last year, that many people wanted, wanted to see it happen again. Um, so, Malcolm did, Malcolm did say for us to get to him the information for the bus and everything, uh, for the bus, how much it costs for the buses from the school. Um, I know the food itself costs, I think around fifteen hundred, I think two thousand would be better, but, again, again, I, I'm, I am an employee of New Haven County Schools, and I'm also a, a product of New Haven County Schools, I graduated from here in nineteen ninety-three. You need to know that, yes, I am. Yes, I am. I'm thinking, and, and I had a wonderful principal, he was mediocre, but, no, no, he was great, he was great, he was great. But I just need to know if this, I'm, I'm so serious, I need to know if it's supported by, by the board, is it supported by central office? Because we haven't had any other conversation, again, there are advisors who are horrified. Are we gonna be targets of whatever animosity, of whatever misunderstanding, when all we wanted to do was provide the, the, um, the kids a chance to have a voice? For the kids to have a chance to have, um, to give feedback, um, and to really understand better how to advocate for themselves and their peers to take advantage of.
I guess what I'm asking is, you guys, I don't think the board is going to stop you guys from doing your equity work, I can't see that hap, I mean.
I was on the news the last time.
It's a sad time, there's many.
I'm not in any conversation.
There was protests out there the last time they were going to do the equity work. So, it was.
Well, the first time, the second time, you guys did it at Cape Fear.
Right, the second time, right, there was no protest.
So, I feel like, I mean, whatever happened with that, I just, I don't know, what do you need to hear from the board, just let us know what you need to hear.
I just need to know that the board is in support of, and they're okay, they're okay with the conversations, um, um, that we have, um, half of y'all were there, half of the board members were there.
Yeah, I mean, we were there, I thought it was a very good event, and I don't see why it wouldn't be supported, I guess, I just, I'm just one, I know, but like, I, I've not heard. There's been no directive to say, stop these meetings, and so, that's, that's what, I mean, if funding is an issue, then we need to figure that out too.
That was one of the questions that, um, some of our students had, they wanted to set up a meeting, um, with Malcolm and some of the other people to talk about logistics, because transportation, um, was an issue before, getting some people to come out to speak. I know you guys did a lot with getting people to come and volunteer, like, some people just did it without having to be paid, you know, making sure students had lunch, making sure that it was all done in a way to where they didn't have to either come out of pocket or go out into the community to get other outside sources to come in and do it, is kind of what we need.
But this time, there is no budget, so, we're at the mercy of whatever the community provides, and they said they would. Because there's also policy, you, you don't ask, you don't ask for funds.
But, I was just saying, there's no vote been had on the board that I am, been a part of, that says, no, we can't do this, this work, and so, I, I mean.
I, I would say we can't really speak for every member of the board at this point, um, one way or the other, I don't wanna, I would not feel comfortable speaking for everybody, um, as far as.
Because this, this committee can only, you know, advise, we can't do it, well, we, you all can't do anything.
So.
And I, I did want to add before we move on, that as far as students coming to any committee meeting they want, they're welcome to do that, except a lot of the committee meetings are held during school hours, and we, if we haven't codified that or proceduralized that, then it would be an unexcused absence for a student to come to these meetings. So, it, it, it would need, again, the principals would have to kind of weigh in on that and know that it was okay, you know, for students to come. Like, you can come now, it's after school, but, um, anything other than that, I think that we would probably need some clarity on before, even though we've invited them to be on every committee.
Yeah.
Well, it's real easy, from my point of view and background, to say, the principal is an important part of the process for anything that has accessibility for students, to dissemination of information or support for different groups or organizations, etc. And you can't tell, I mean, everybody has their own thing, and I understand that, but I do think that what we're talking about is important, that we, Dr. Fouse will allow for students to go to a principals' meeting and have a short presentation, maybe show the video, et cetera. And I think that, as Walker said it well, I just, I, I think you were right, Brian, in what you said. There was a period of time where there was, for whatever reason, quite a long acrid or not, that EDI could be in trouble. I'd like to think that just the representation here today pretty well puts that to the side, because this is a very important process. And I appreciate you saying something, but I, I, I validate the rationale behind it, but I do not think it's here now. Um, so, uh, our job to, to try to make this happen as fast as we can, and so, I, I mean, I, I just, I've been a strong student advocate from the very get-go, and, and actually talked to Casey before I came in the door.
Yes, you did, yes, you did. I saw her too.
But, uh.
Ms. Mason Shala has something she wants to ask.
Oh, yes, so, I know that you have the video in your email, do we want to play the video while this is being recorded live, or do we want to?
Right, that would be the question, do, do the students want, because then the community is right now able to watch. So, if we watch it right now during the meeting, is there a way that we can, um, I guess, if we're, if the board members need to be watching it, um, is there a way for us to watch it this evening, hopefully, or tomorrow, and then get back to? Or do you think, do my fellow board members think that's not enough time, what are our thoughts on that?
I mean, I'm gonna watch it as soon as I can, I don't know.
It's on our phone right now, we can watch, but probably, um.
I just, in case, like, if we shared the video and the video was played and there was something that needed to be edited.
Right, right.
I would, wouldn't want that to be heard and listened to now, and then tomorrow, it'd be something different, just to kind of be clear and concise, so, maybe if afterwards, it just, and give us feedback if whatever needs to be.
Absolutely, I think that's, I don't think that's unreasonable.
And then we would, at the next board meeting, the principals' meeting will have already occurred.
Correct.
You know, so, we can go in that order, you know, um, it's still, it's, it's not as fast as what we want, but it will give us time to be in front of the principals, uh, they can offer feedback, then it can come to the board, and we can listen to it, and, you know, um, and then wherever it goes from there, you know, is, you know.
So, I, I'm, I'm being confused, so, I, I'm just wanna, wanna be clear. So, what we're talking about is with this video, this is the report of the Student Voice. So, if, if a student came to be on the agenda and they stood up there and they said exactly what was on this video, no one would pre-approve that. If they sent a piece of paper and Malcolm stood up there and read it, or you stood up there and read it, no one would pre-approve that. So, why is the board, why, why would the board then be like, you need to, to change your words for your presentation to the Board of Education? Um, or it needs to go to the principals' meeting for them to approve your words in your report to the Board of Education in a video? As opposed to, so, I'm confused why this is causing more of a hullabaloo than if they were just a student who actually came and stood before the board.
I can, I will try to answer that, but I have, we'll raise a question first.
Okay.
Um, when anyone has to present to the board and they get on the agenda and they say, maybe have ten minutes to present something or give any type of information at a board meeting, do they have to submit what they're gonna present? If it's slides, videos, words, or anything, is that the procedure? Okay, so, that's the directive that we were given, the directive was if the students are going to, um, submit a video or a statement in their absence, that it needed to be submitted ahead of time.
And I would add, typically, it's, it's, it's like a week, at least a week ahead, so that's, that, I mean, it gives people time to have it, if they have any questions. And we just started doing agenda review meetings, it's just our second one, and it just gives people a ti- time for that purpose. You know, it's, it's more like a timing thing, I don't think it's a censor thing, I don't think.
No.
No, it's, it's just to make sure it's, I guess, good, I mean, it's.
Well, if there's a presentation, then the public has a chance to, to, and we have a chance to look at it ahead of time. So, you can already start formulating your questions, you know, kind of the old, it doesn't really.
It's not really an approval.
It's not really an approval, it's like, this is just what.
Prepare, preparation.
This is what we're posting.
Yeah.
And I remember we had to present in front of, and it gives the students the insight of editing. Like, editing, you know, you don't want to, like, usually when you're getting up there to talk, and you're speaking, you're just speaking. Or you, you maybe not, you're not preparing your remarks, but that's giving them, okay, we're gonna keep this clear, concise, and make sure that it is an editing process, and that's when you go through the different, and that's part of learning. Going through the evaluation process, understand writing, how that script, how that communication is gonna appear, but that's all those modes of communication also being given to not only the students, but those, any individual, any individual who is presenting information to the board.
And I appreciate you asking the question, definitely a good question. And then, and, and saying that comment as well, because that's one of the things that they are seeking from the adult accomplices last time we met. That's what you guys wanted, right, feedback from adults.
Right, I guess in future, just make, I guess, make sure if you have a video, just to have it like at least, was it a week, is it a week?
It's a week, it's, yeah.
It's a week ahead of, yeah, before the agenda meeting.
I mean, if that's possible.
Well, it's actually two weeks before our meeting, but a week before the agenda meeting.
Right, because Student Voice should always have a place on the agenda.
Yeah, when you're on, you just.
It's just a matter of like adding whatever we need to add to the, the document to be able to view it.
And they've done an awesome job for the April board meeting, right?
There you go.
The timeline is met.
Yes.
There you go.
And so, I was wrong, the April board meeting is before the principals' meeting, um, because April fourth is the meeting, and then April the seventh, I mean, the sixth is the principals' meeting.
Wait, the board meeting is before the principals' meeting?
Yeah, this month it is, like, this month it's not.
Oh, next month?
Next month, in April it is, and you know what, that could change, because that's also the day before spring break, that April is sixth. So, the principals' meeting could change, I don't know, that would be something we just have to find out.
So, we want to standardize procedures for these release publications or presentations to happen. The students are to send those to the board directly, not to this committee, right? That's the expectation.
To get it added to the agenda? Yes.
It's gonna be posted for a meeting.
Yes.
And they could send it to Malcolm, who would get it.
Who would get it to us as well, yeah.
If it were us, then we will have to be checking on the time of our meetings or the way to convey that feedback in a timely manner so it can meet the other deadlines. We need to be, try to get better with our procedures so people know what grounds, if there is an event, who needs to approve it, what is the process. So that's, I think that's, that's a good, like best practice to be able to standardize all these procedures for everybody who wants to join and to be part of the, the committee.
Okay.
Excellent. All right, let's go to the next thing. We've been talking about this a lot and it's great conversation. I really appreciate everybody's support. Um, the EDI parent work group report, what did you need to say, Kida?
Um, I was just, I was gonna ask, um, so that, the video submission is entirely based on, um, getting it into slides or technology for the school board meeting, whereas if a group of us came to the meeting and spoke, we wouldn't have any issues submitting.
Nope.
Pre-recordings or showing our script or anything like that. All right.
Yep. Good.
This is one of the issues, communication.
Yes.
Well, and you know, probably we could give you some latitude on the presentation. You know, just to know that you wanna present, we get, we get you on the committee, there could be some latitude there because there's really no difference between you just come in and talk and then you come in and have something uploaded.
Thank you.
Parent work group.
Parent work group, anybody.
Thank you, thank you.
You're clarifying. I, I'm glad you clarified because I think that's important. Um, I'm super brand new, so I don't know who represents the parent work group. Is there any?
I don't think they're here.
Nobody's here. Okay, so what we have.
And you know why they're not here? Because they weren't invited to this meeting.
They weren't.
No, because there's, it's, from what I understand from parents, it's a separate group completely and they're, and they're expecting a, an invitation when, when it, the meeting is focused on them.
So I guess we need to invite them next time.
All right, good to know. Um, so what I have is that, uh, just some notes, a summary, uh, that they met in February. Um, and the following are areas where parents had the most interest or queries about, um, redefining, uh, parent engagement or defining it. Um, bridging the gap for schools without PTA representation, um, and equitable access to pre-licium, lyceum, and AIG recruitment. Um, and their next meeting is on the 9th at 5 o'clock. So that's the work group report for that.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Is it the 9th, uh, 9th of March?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess can we extend an invitation to them for the next meeting, April's meeting? Just so we can get, hear all the things that, that they, they gave you briefs on. Cause I would love to hear from them. I'm sure everyone would wanna hear from them.
Are we having anybody from this committee being part of those meetings or is only Malcolm the one that is there? Supposed to be there.
Well, Melissa, the, the chair calls these meetings. Malcolm comes because he's.
Talking about the parent work group. Is there a representative of the EDI on that? I mean, I don't think we ever discussed that.
We never discussed it.
Huh? We didn't?
We never discussed it. We never just, and it may have been, no, I don't think, based on, we go back to the meeting notes, I don't think we ever discussed it. They were discussing.
I know. You know what I'm thinking? Especially given what's happening today and all of the, the information. I know Malcolm is listening, but, um, do we take meeting notes? Do we write and publish our meeting notes? Are they available and accessible to committee members and the administration who's tasked with moving the work forward?
We should have notes.
And see, that is one of the themes in our policy on board committees. That each committee will have a chair, a school system subject matter expert. We will have, we will record minutes and post them somewhere or at least have them ready to do, that we will have a regular date and time so that anybody knows when they can. Those are the kind of thing, and we will develop a, a standardized thing. And so we have not, some committees keep notes, some committees don't keep notes.
Can I just say, we, thank you, Ms. Mason. I, um, we did for the longest time when Dr. Smith was here, um, we had Jerry Smith was the secretary. And Malcolm does not have an assistant, but someone needs to be here to take notes every time we have an EDI meeting. And I don't know.
It could be the chair. I mean, I take notes at our.
Yeah, I don't know if that's any technical, or maybe if Ms. Mason can say, can you please take notes this time? But someone needs to, they need to be transcribed and, you know. So Malcolm might wanna give his opinion on that because, um, I mean, as long as notes are taken and they can be uploaded some, you know, for the next time.
Absolutely.
I think, um, news, my first meeting, and I was on the county's website trying to see what was out there to kind of prepare myself, get my feet under me. And the last posted agenda notes under the EDI tab was from like March 2020.
Yes.
Yeah.
So is there a way, I mean, I know we've switched to like the YouTube format and the live streaming, but there's not.
And I've asked about that. Um, I believe they were talking about putting them on, but I don't know what the.
There, is there not a tab on Assembly? Um, cause I know the notes have been uploaded since then. I've, I've had the notes.
Public, yeah, because before I, before I joined this committee, I had difficulty finding those notes as well. So I did mention that to Malcolm. Um, and we had talked about that.
It's simply that we were like the board.
Am I good to move on to the next thing while we're?
I want to clarify, I want to clarify, I'm.
Yeah.
Equity work group, um, and I think we've been combined, but I don't, to be honest with you, when you were asking, I don't know if the parent work, what would we call it?
Parent committee group work?
The parent work group.
It came out of the equity work group. It didn't come out of EDI.
Malcolm has created an application form for it and a newly constituted group that came to us in January, a big.
It came out of suggestions from Doug. See the audit, that they, the equity audit that Suffolk Solutions did. And so it was supposed to be a business group. The parents, the students, so then all three of them aligned with, I mean, everybody would be working together to infuse. And so that, that whole, um, model, that model came within or under Dr. Smith. And so it was already introduced here. So that's where the parents came in. So what Malcolm did, I'm not gonna say what Malcolm did, but this, it was, that was something that was discussed prior to, and then he just got the ball rolling with it.
Let us research.
When we start talking about the parent equity work, what he did. But I don't think we talked about making sure that there is a EDI board member, just like we have our school board members here, but we do need a EDI board member. Okay, if you're gonna have a student equity work group, you need an EDI board member there. If you're gonna have parent equity, you need some, so then it's like everyone is in a, you know, that communication is always open. And if it's a question that needs to be asked, okay, we can bring the, the question back here. But I don't think we discussed that process.
So, so last thing I'm gonna say on that. So typically after EDI would meet and would determine certain things, it would, it would come back to the work group for us to work. Um, forums out. So that's, that's where, again, a lot of things, um, have gotten lost in transition since April or March of last year.
That feels right. So there was a graphic that explained the workflow process and you're describing that for us really well. And maybe people are still working off the graphic, but wondering why things aren't flowing toward them as expected. But I wonder if Malcolm ever saw the graphic and whether the new administration has embraced it and is moving it forward.
A lot of information, I don't believe, but I can't speak on my, I don't think a lot of information was passed.
I think it's still in the drive.
Yes.
It is in the folder and I think so.
It's still in the drive.
We can decide that next, next meeting, we can discuss the representation of the, this committee, these board members into the other subcommittees that are being created around EDI. We can have a good conversation as an agenda, agenda item for next meeting. So we are prepared with all the information we have from the previous times and then we can share that.
Ms. Mason, have you had access to the EDI, the, the work group, um, Google Drive? Because a lot of work has been done on a lot of levels and I feel like.
I don't, that's an invite-only kind of thing, correct?
Yeah, I think so, but I mean.
So no, I, I don't have that.
Okay, so I think.
You know, we can make a copy of it and then just start it over.
Yeah, so you can just have an idea of what we've been working on.
But I have a question because right before Dr. Smith left, we were doing a revamp of making sure we did goals and all of those things. And yes, some groups like, um, Casey, their, their group was, um, meeting Dr. Smith, Dr. Casey Smith. Her group was meeting and then, um, but everybody came up with various metrics and outlines of timelines of goals related to the standards under EDI. So what is, so does, if, is, you said Malcolm is on right now, he's just listening? Oh, okay.
I don't, so we met, um, I don't know if everybody would know, but the board members, I hope we know. So we met here, a bunch of people from central office and then a few of us from different schools. We came together and met, um, I don't, you see what I'm saying on my calendar? There's no way, um, 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 without my readers, I can figure out which day it was on, but it was March or April when we all came together. It was. Um, we did come together because I don't think, I can't think what the name of the vendors, um, but we came together.
Suffolk Solutions.
For the, no, no, it was at the Suffolk Solutions. It was, um, it was another vendor that had been a part of the school system. But we came together and we met, um, people from human resource, every, people from every single department for Nana County Schools was here in this room and we broke up into different groups.
And that was a work, that was a school of work groups. That wasn't.
It's online, but it, no, it's not the work, it wasn't the work group.
But it wasn't the EDI committee?
It wasn't. It's.
Was it? I know, we had.
It's a five-year plan?
Um, no.
Oh, the strategic plan.
The strategic plan?
The strategic plan. We came together. We came, all of that came together. We all came in the room and we're, thank y'all so much. Um, y'all, I'm late for a reason. All right, we're, okay, so, but yeah, the strategic plan. We came together and worked on it. I haven't heard anything since then.
But I'm talking for the EDI, not the strategic plan for the board or the county.
But the strategic plan encompasses, that's why I mentioned it, because I think it was just as detailed as everything else we're talking about. That's all.
So can I add?
But it incorporated some of the things that we had coming from here. That we had kind of like the goals and the metrics and the various, because we haven't even discussed it anymore to even get to move forward with the work that we were trying to do. Cause it's like, I'm gonna be honest with you. It's like coming to these meetings, I'm like, okay.
Well, Casey, Casey Smith, uh, Karis Flag, myself, Jerel, um, Lewis. And I can't think of there was one more person. We focused on the EDI part, um, because we met in that, that room. But again, the strategic plan, I just haven't heard anything else about it.
Ms. Mason, I just wanna add to that. That, that is a very good point because EDI is one of our pillars of our strategic plan. And that's why, that's when you were asking me earlier, I know, you know, we, some time has gone past, but like, I, the board hadn't had any kind of vote and I'm, I'm going, EDI is still supported according to our strategic plan. We have goals and we have metrics. And if, uh, funding is an issue, then we should need to talk about that. And if there's things that you guys wanna plan, I think we need to get together somehow and figure that out because those are very successful events.
A budget for next year.
Yeah, it's budget time, yeah.
Yes.
And if we are going to make it one of our EDI, one of our five pillars, then we need to put energy, time, and money behind it. And that's obvious. So I feel like there's, you know, we've approved that strategic plan, that, that, that is not gonna change. That's a working document. And, um, I expect and hope we get updates on how we're doing and, and then we might have to pull out the strategic plan, take a look at it and go, okay, where, where are we on our timelines? Because we set ourselves the goals and timelines. So maybe, maybe we can review that at one of our next meetings to see where we are.
And, and we can align that very easily because we've been having, everything was coming from the strategic plan and branched out into the subcommittees we had before. So we can create actionable steps. All those are done and we have some things that are in the process, some others that, you know, are stopped, some others that have no way to keep doing them because things have changed. But if we take a good time, one of our meetings to analyze that from the top down to see where we are and then what things are gonna be actionable now with the new system. That could be a good way to use our time because I'm, I'm, I'm feeling the same way. I'm coming here and I don't feel like we are like making a clear impact. The, the clear thing that we have right now is student voice and we have also the parents groups. But also we need to keep working our role here as a board members. So are we creating these procedures so things flow smoothly so we can this, uh, open to the community to straighten the ways of communication flow. People knows when, when they come here and they wanna present something. These are the, the timelines that we have or who they go to the board, the full board, or they come to the EDI committee. So these, these things that are gonna make communication easy for everybody.
That actually smoothly transitions into where you get to talk. That's right. And mine's very brief, just an update to connect us all, but I did wanna pass on a message from Malcolm. And just a clarification procedurally related to what you're saying, Lena. Everything from student voice should go to Malcolm. So when you wanna get something in front of the board, go to Malcolm, he'll get it in front of the board, okay? Just a little clarification. Malcolm, if I got that wrong, I am certain that I will receive a text from you. No problem. Okay, this is just a connection with the Community Relations Advisory Committee for the city county and some work that they had doing before I joined in November. And the work they were doing was trying to foster communication between the district and parents who are caring for children with disabilities. So to help families get a sense of how to advocate for their child, how to understand special education resources in New Hanover County. And so the only update is that an email was sent connecting our chair for the C-RAC, that's the Community Relations Advisory Committee, and Linda Thompson, who is the chief diversity and equity officer for the county, with Malcolm and Sean Lamb. Because at the time, my best understanding of who to connect with was Sean Lamb. But it's really possible, Ms. Mason, that you want to get on those communications as well as the chair of our committee.
And EC, she's chair of.
Oh, perfect, yeah. I'm chair of EC. Am I, well, I'm the.
And gifted is what, she's chair of both.
I'm, I'm, I'm on a few.
Okay, perfect. So Malcolm would be the person just to say, hey, can I get in on that thing with C-RAC?
C-R-A-C, yeah. That's Community Relations Advisory Committee. Yeah. Who's the current chair?
Liz Carbon.
Liz Carbon, okay.
Yeah. Awesome.
Good. That was short, wasn't it?
Fabulous. Um, is there any other announcements that anybody has?
One thing that I would love to put in front of our ears again, and I know that Stephanie will remember, Ms. Walker will remember, this was a, a big focus of conversation last year, is that addressing issues of racial equity in the schools is really essential. And so I love the work we've been doing. We need to keep doing the work we've been doing and we need to reinvigorate some of our earlier conversations around race equity and educational justice. And I'll just mention that saying, there are probably other people who would also like to say, and let's keep this in mind too. And so can we create a forum where we don't pit our interests or our foci against each other, but rather we create a narrative to say, yeah, it's gonna be all of the kids that succeed, every single one of them. And if cer- certain groups need some attention right now, we're here to give that attention.
I like it.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
I love what was beautifully said.
What you, looking at me like.
I was waiting for you to respond.
I'm not gonna say nothing, man.
I figured you were going to.
Man, Kurt said I had this conversation.
A flyer. I said, that was so well said. You need to put that like on a shirt or something, a flyer, something.
We need to figure out what our next steps are because if you, you wanna plan something for April, you and Abby, are you still together on that?
Yes.
And we need to figure out what next steps are for you guys.
We have, we have spoken with the speakers and everyone and everything, so, um.
You need transportation, you need a space, right? You need.
Well, right, we've already, yes. We, we, I mean, we've already done the work. We just wanted to go ahead. So, um, I will meet with the student equity team members and then the community members next week. Abby and I will set up a meeting, um, a Zoom with them and we will move forward. Um, I think she forwarded the information to Malcolm, I hope, on our behalf for the, um, cost of the bus. And I don't remember which community members offered to cover the food costs, but, um, we'll have all that. So, um, we're meeting, what month is this? In March? Oh, my gosh.
In March, yeah, April.
Um, so short month, I just wanna throw that out there. This is a so short week, but I'm just gonna throw that out, leave that there. But next month, I'm gonna have, yes, I can have a much more concrete, if you like the report, I mean, I will. But next month, I would have, yes, I can have a much more concrete, if you like, a report, I mean, I will...
I would love that.
Three-minute report, um, which means I or Abby will talk, and not both of us. Everyone keep it three minutes, okay?
And I would consider that one of the successes I learned about this school district, right? And there have been other successes, so, Ms. Walker, I wonder if there's a chance in a subsequent agenda for us to lift up the things that worked well. So often, we focus on the things that aren't working, that was a major success. And I would love to use my voice to say to the new board, let's, let's really pay attention to this, it was a big success for us.
Since you brought that up.
Yes, it is.
Abby, Abby has, it was a part of her being student, excuse me, being teacher of the year, it was a part of her being, um, teacher of the region. Uh, it was a part of, we spoke with DPI, we presented two summers ago, we spoke at a principals' conference. Um, when Sheldon Aiken, Aiken, no, Aiken was a part of this, he was questioned from some other states, somehow they got information. But again, there's other counties that have, um, sought out information on, how did you all pull this off? It wasn't nothing to pull off, it was talking to students, inquiring, how is your perception of your school? What is your perception? And it was taken back to the principals, I mean, it's a powerful, wonderful thing, I mean, I don't wanna get myself in trouble, but it's technically what we already do as educators, whether you're a teacher, a counselor, a social worker, is we just put it in a bigger format, um, um, in order to give it more, I mean, it, it, it's a wonderful thing. The kids enjoy it, they love it, they get a chance to learn.
Super positive event.
Right, I think one of the last students from Hanover who spoke, he said, um, without the student equity team, he said, because of the way that certain things are structured, he said, I would have never met these other students from all the backgrounds. Um, how do you do that when you're in the same school? But that does happen. Um, I will say one last thing, because I don't like to talk much, but there is, when we did the ICE program, one of these surveys from all of the students from across the county, they mentioned how kids were separated. And one of the things that they mentioned was not just that, um, they felt like some kids were treated differently because of their ethnicity, they said that many kids were treated differently because of their academic, um, status.
Yes.
That was a part of the ICE, um, program, which was a grant NAMC County School used within many middle schools. So, at the end of the day, I mean, I know, I know where many of us are very religious, and I know very, many of us are professional and things of that nature. But at the end of the day, the kids, they see it, they know it. Um, how much better to have this conversation with those students? They move on to whether it be the military, the workforce, college, and come back and say, you all provided this opportunity, now we're gonna do a better thing in our communities. It's, it's just, oh, I mean, we're just, we're just educators.
Just...
All of the professionals, all the...
We are, yes, absolutely.
Not wrong.
I actually mentioned that same thing, um, last night at our student voice meeting, the fact that it's not only ethnic and racial, um, divides, but also academic levels and economic backgrounds. There's so many different things that make students different and affect their, you know, education. And so, just finding the best way to teach our students without putting a label on it based on solely race, solely, um, ethnic backgrounds.
That's why student voice is so important, it's nice to hear from students.
It comes from good stuff, trust me.
Yeah, I'm sure.
During COVID, and during, this is the last one, during COVID, and during... But, but, but it was, but the thing, um, I used to have this conversation with different administrators and counselors and social workers across the county, um, a lot of our students do understand our social cues. They do understand what, what's going on in polit- politics, they understand what's going on in their families. I, I could tell you stories, we don't have time, I'm not gonna do it now, but they knew what was going on. When it comes to, and although we can't utilize this in school, when it comes to certain comedian jokes, they understand it. Because one of the most powerful moments I ever realized was a student who was bi-racial, who told a joke. It wasn't inappropriate, but it was a shock because the other kid didn't know they were inequities. And he destroyed her whole perception. I said, son, you can't do that, well, why? Um, um, we live it every day, you know, we may live it every day, son, but, you know, it's kinda like taking a mole, throwing it in sunlight, you just, you have shocked hits in the tower, they can't focus, I'm not saying they're in the dark, I'm just saying. They don't understand, but I will never forget that conversation where that kid said, well, why can't I say it? Ooh, that's, you know, and how, how do I respond to that? Because he says, we live it every day, Mr. Jones, I thought it was funny. It was, but this just wasn't the place. Having said that, again, our students know, our students know the trends, they know the politics, they know what's going on when the, what some people refer to as the George Floyd era. The most powerful thing a student ever said was, it's the only reason we're paying attention to this is because we're stuck at home, um, COVID. Would this really be an issue if we weren't, um, in school? Would anybody ever pay attention? And I was like, can you make sure that, uh, that when you repeat this, that Mr., you tell them that Mr. Jones did not say this to you? But she said it, she said it twice in, in two different meetings. Again, our kids know, our kids know, and, and when it's time to speak up, when it's time to protest, Casey and I had this conversation. If we as the adults don't explain to them there's a right way to do things, and we leave them to their own devices, what will happen? Because I know many a college kids, one in particular from my family, who would not answer the phone during a lot of the protests. He said, I wouldn't answer the phone because I knew mom, dad, and you, Jones, were gonna tell me to go home and to stay out of it. I just wanted to tell him in the event that you're doing something peacefully and it turns wrong, yeah, you better get to the house, because you know how your mom and dad is, and I don't have their money.
Well, that's a, that's a lovely way to end the meeting, huh?
Just wanna make sure you remember.
Thank you guys so much for, for being here this evening, for participating, for communicating, for, for all the things that you guys are doing. Um, and we will see you the next one, which we will, I'm assuming is going to be, I probably shouldn't assume, I won't assume. I'll, I'll, I'll talk to Malcolm.
Yeah, we'll find out with Malcolm.
But thank you guys for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.